I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a little housekeeping first for our transcriptionist. This evening, all members of the planning board are present. We also have Rich Krogan, planning board attorney, Sixto Martinez, Jr., our building inspector. And absent this evening is Michael Guadri, our fire inspector. This evening is simply a preliminary hearing for 17, I believe, 17 to 39 Midland Avenue. They've been here, they have not been here, this is a new project. I wanted the board to see what's going on, there's been months of review and debate. So it's time, they've got to the point where they need to see us. Here also to kind of, once they present, to get a conceptual okay. Before they go any further, spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do any more planning and plans and research, they want to get a feeling from the board, which is fair, okay? Also tonight, just keep in mind, if you speak into the mic, or if you speak, speak into the mic, please. Also, they've also been told the same thing, speak into the mic. If they have to go through the easel for anything, to remove the mic from the podium so that Ms. Hanson hears everything, okay? That being said, gentlemen? Just introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is David Higgins, I'm with Lang Contelli Engineering and Surveying. With me here tonight is Phil Greeley and Joseph Mutian, both from Colliers Engineering. Their office actually assisted us with the traffic study that was prepared. The application that we have here with the board is for two new warehouses located between Midland Avenue, which is here, Wisner is off the map, but it's basically be over here. Cottage Street is down in this location. I believe part of the building actually was used a few years ago for, I think it was by Pepsi. And I think they had a fire there at one point, so they've, you know, moved out of the building, I believe demolished it. And what they're looking to do is now put up two new warehouse buildings. There are several buildings that are existing up towards the front. Some of them are being removed as part of the project for the warehouse number one. And other buildings are to remain. Just looking at the square footage of the buildings, the existing structure is total about seven, I'm sorry, 15,000 square feet. And the two new warehouse buildings are, building number one is approximately 194,000 square feet. Building number two is approximately 77,000 square feet. So what we're proposing to do is basically have access off of Midland Avenue, which again goes out to Wisner. We do show a through road that goes out to Cottage Street, but what we've shown there is essentially a crash gate. There's residential properties along Cottage Street, so what we're looking to do is basically not have traffic in and out of the property from Cottage Street, but rather, it would be for emergency purposes only, there'd be a crash gate there. Then, God forbid, there was an emergency, they could come, you know, through that access there. But otherwise, again, no access to or from Cottage Street. We have laid out the plans, we have parking spaces that were shown. We did some calculations, I know the city code has a number of different ways that parking can be calculated. One is based on the square footage of the building, and another is based on the number of employees. I do know, again, with regards to those calculations, based on the square footage, we showed a total required parking of 718 spaces. And based on the number of employees, and I know that we had gone through sort of, I think it was ITE standards, to relay the square footage to the number of employees, back to the number of parking spaces. In doing that, we came up with a total requirement of 317 parking spaces. I'm sorry, actually, if we use the city code based on their employees, it would be 172 employees and 86 spaces. I should say that Colliers also provided separate analysis using ITE. And they based on, based on that, it was 317 parking spaces were required, including 12 for ADA accessibility. We do show on the plan a total of 12 loading docks for building number one. And eight loading docks for building number two. And so there would be access around all of each of the buildings. For, again, for emergency services, if there's a fire, there'd be full access around all sides of the buildings. And also, I should say that we show a spur off of the railroad here. We had coordinated with the agency for the railroad, and we show this spur here. They would be using that for, you know, deliveries, similar to the way the facility here does. They have a spur coming off of that railroad as well.
Dave?
Yes?
How many parking are you showing?
There's 317 spaces shown, I believe. Yes, 317, including 12 ADA.
Great.
And again, I believe that was the number that Colliers came up with based on ITE.
Right, okay.
We did also show like a preliminary landscaping plan, and again, this is conceptual. But based on the landscaping, we've shown, you know, buffering some areas, buffering the residential properties along Cottage. Both along the, I guess that'd be the east side of building number two, and the east side of building number one. Based on what's shown, it's 113 evergreen trees, 27 deciduous trees, and 37 shrubs. The other map that we provided for this was a cross-section. So there's a, this is a cross-section, basically Cottage Street, building number two is here. And there is, you know, a grade difference, so the topography of this is such that it, from the entrance, it does kind of go up the hill. We are cutting, you know, a portion of the site here for building number two. And then we essentially showed where the residents would be here, it drops down, there's a retaining wall that we show here. I think the maximum height of that retaining wall right now is 36 feet. Based on the preliminary grading plan that we've done. And we would, again, put some landscaping along the property line there, basically to screen that view from those properties. I think the last thing that I had to provide was that we did provide some renderings. Hopefully you have those in your packets, I don't have a full size with me, but I did provide eight and a half by elevens here that I have. If you don't have them, I can certainly pass those around for you. But they're essentially renderings, architectural renderings of what the buildings and the site would look like from various vantage points, so.
Sure, you could pass those around, we would appreciate that.
So, and I, Phil, would you want to make a little presentation about the traffic and the analysis?
Good evening, Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. So we had prepared a traffic impact study, as well as a parking evaluation. I'll start with the parking evaluation to lead from where Dave started. We looked at the sizes of the buildings, and we looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Handbook for this type of development. And the ITE Parking Generation Manual provides information on ranges of required parking. And you'll find in some codes are either more stringent or less stringent than reality. So this is a good guide, and the 317 spaces is based on that information and the square footage. And, which equates to, you know, number of employees. In terms of the traffic study, we had conducted traffic counts at key intersections along Wisner Avenue, Cottage, and at Midland, and also at Wisner at 211, to identify existing traffic conditions. Those were collected last spring of 2024. They were when schools were in session, so we have, you know, conditions reflective of that. Traffic volumes along that section of Wisner, in the vicinity of Midland, range from approximately 900 to almost 1,000 vehicles, that's total both directions, during a one-hour period, during the peak time. We look at time periods in the morning from basically 6:30 to 9:30 in the morning, and from 3:30 to 6:30 in the afternoon, and then look at the highest one-hour time period that falls within that bracket. The traffic study then projects out the future conditions to account for background growth and other developments. We use the rate of 3% per year, which is very conservative. In terms of the traffic projections for the facility, we have two buildings, we don't know who the tenants are. So we have to do more of a generic evaluation. Based on New York State DOT standards, they're utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is referred to as ITE, trip generation. There's a category for warehouse, and then there's a category that's more light industrial, which has some higher traffic generation because there's more employees, et cetera. So we analyze it both ways, as pure warehouse, as, which would generate somewhere in the order of a total of 100 trips total. And that would include somewhere in the order of 5% to 10% truck trips. Up to as many as 200 trips in the peak hour, which would be more of a light industrial, which is more employee-intensive type of traffic. We analyze it both ways, the original study assumed access to both Cottage Street and Midland. The Cottage Street was only going to be used for employee trips. Subsequently, we modified that, so Cottage Street is only emergency access. All traffic would be to this facility via Midland Avenue. Based on the analysis, we found that during peak times, there would be delays trying to make left turns exiting out of Midland. So we suggested an evaluation with signalization at the intersection. We prepared a preliminary traffic signal plan, showing the location of where it would go in place. And we prepared some preliminary cost analysis so that we could get an understanding of what that would mean in terms of the project. We recommended that, again, not knowing who the tenant is, you could have low generation, which you wouldn't need a traffic signal, or a higher generation, which we analyzed. Therefore, what we're recommending is monitoring. And what would happen is, I forget the exact dollar amounts, we submitted that information, preliminary cost estimate, which would be reviewed by the city engineer and your consultants, for the installation, including some factors for inflation and other review costs. And the proposal would be to bond that signal. Because you wouldn't necessarily put it in on day one, because you don't know, it may not be needed. But to make sure that if it is needed, that it would be fully designed, and that there would be monies in place to install it if necessary, at the direction of the city engineer. The typical monitoring period runs a year or two typically. Again, that's up to the city to make a determination how long they want it to be monitored. But it would also look at when you reach a certain occupancy. And typically, we would look at somewhere around 75% occupancy, so that you have a good idea of what the actual traffic generation is, and to see if the signal would be required. And if it is, then it would have to be installed. So that is what the conclusion kind of of our study was, to not install it on day one, but have it fully designed, bonded, and then install it if necessary. So that's just a quick synopsis of kind of where we are right now.
The board should also know that Midland Avenue is going to have improvements on it. Sidewalks, curbs, city, and both applicant are working on those issues. But the city had already plans to upgrade Midland Avenue in plan, or as it is already.
And the traffic signal would have pedestrian accommodations also, I forgot to mention that.
Do any of your studies account for staggering the workforce there?
So, so in terms of the trip generation, it assumes that typically you would have at least two shifts in a warehouse, okay? If you stagger or you adjust those, the traffic volumes would be less. If there's three shifts, it would even be lower. But the database usually assumes, you know, two shifts, some overlap. The exact time of when those shifts start, you know, falls, you know, somewhere around that peak time that we referred to, so.
Before, you had mentioned that warehouse versus light office.
Light industrial.
Light industrial, so aren't these plans for warehousing though?
Yes, but what DOT has found is that there is some more variation in the warehouse in terms of what the actual generation is. So they ask us to analyze as light industrial, because that's a higher trip generation rate. So yes, it's warehouse, but from an analysis standpoint, you analyze it as if it's a higher generator than a typical warehouse.
And in warehousing, isn't there a lot of automation which?
Correct.
And limits the employees.
So in some of the warehousing, we've found that the actual trip generation is even lower because it's automated, there's fewer employees. And some of that comes into play when you look at the parking. But we have to assume that there's shifts, you have the overlaps, and there's enough parking to accommodate that. So, I mean, I don't know if the city ever does it, but in other municipalities, sometimes we'll do like land bank spaces, so that if they're not needed, it can be kept green. But I don't know if the city ever entertains that. But our recommendation would be to design it for this level of traffic, this level of parking, to account for the overlap in shifts, so that there's enough parking on site. It should also be noted, we haven't taken any credit for walk-in trips or public transportation trips. You know, that is a variable that you don't know until you see the occupancy, how much is utilized.
And you also have an interior traffic design within the site, so traffic will flow.
From traffic circulation standpoint, we have full access around the building, we have access to the parking areas. The internal sidewalk system would match into the city's system along Midland Avenue so that pedestrians can move safely from the external sidewalk to the internal sidewalk to get to the building, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Nicole?
It's obvious you've done a lot of planning, and I liked the pictures I saw. My question for you, as a planning board, or a city planner, is if we don't know what kind of materials you're bringing in and out, then that could be... I'm concerned for the citizens of the city, if it's like construction debris, or is it just retail? I mean, there's, it's vast when we don't know who the tenant's going to be.
So I don't know the particulars on the tenants, that prospective tenants are. But for this location and the type, it would be, it wouldn't be construction debris, it may be construction materials and/or retail materials. But in terms of, from a traffic standpoint, we know what's going in and out. I guess in terms of safety and what goes in the building, that would be more up to the city requirements, the city engineers, the fire department, et cetera, so.
I have another question.
Well, just to answer that.
Oh, yeah.
This is a typical plan, if this, they'll, these are empty buildings.
Right.
They'll have to come before the planning board for approval for that use, based on that zone.
Okay, so we're not approving, when it comes for a vote, we're not approving it like with a blank slate for whatever they want to bring in, okay.
Just like we did old Longsbury's, that had three spaces in it. Every time a tenant wants to open in there, they have to come to the planning board to make sure the use is proper for the zone.
Thank you for refreshing my memory there.
Problem.
And then my other question is, is there a train access to your property? The train runs through there? Which means there could be construction debris materials that would come through the city that could be harmful unless we don't approve that.
That's already there, there's a lumberyard there that uses that train to this day.
Correct.
No, I'm talking about demolished things. More like way back in the day, we had Cartwell that wanted to come through, and they had the trash train. I just want to protect the citizens for that.
I think, again, that would be.
That's a siding use, right there, that, only for that use of that building.
Right, okay.
There's no pass-through.
Correct.
It'd be delivered to that property right away.
Right, but that could increase the train traffic, if you will, in the city. Okay, that is a concern of mine, I'm not going to lie, but I do love the plans so far, I think they look great. And looks like you put a lot of time and energy into it, and money, I'm sure, thank you.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Ms. Witt?
So I have a question, I don't know who can answer this, but you had mentioned about the parking being, but there would be a buffer on Cottage Street near where the residential houses are. So if I'm looking at this sheet, showing that the parking is here, there's buffering here, but there isn't buffering where the, where the actual houses are? So my concern would be, are you extending that line, or am I looking at the wrong?
There's no buffering here.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and if that's Cottage.
So the architect had prepared these mainly for the, to show the
buildings.
Style of the construction for the buildings.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Could you go to the microphone? Yeah.
Sorry, so the renderings were prepared by the architect, generally to show the style of the construction of the buildings.
Okay.
The, this hasn't been updated to show the landscaping that was added to the plan. And certainly, the landscaping may change as the plan progresses through, you know, this board.
Sure.
And, you know, we get your input on, you know, other areas that you might want to have screened.
So can you go over the schematic where you had, where you showed the landscaping and showed the slope? Because I'm visualizing this in my head of how it's going to look and what you're, what you're pitching here.
So what we're showing on this is the, essentially, this is a cross-sectional view from Cottage Street towards building number two, which is the building in the back of the property, okay? So you're looking at essentially from Cottage Street here, you're at elevation, you know, roughly, it looks like about 650. And the floor elevation for the proposed building is somewhere around 600. So there's a slope from here down to the back, and then there's a retaining wall that we show dropping off here. And the landscaping that we're providing is basically, this is the retaining wall, right here. Right here, and then we show landscaping running in between. Again, to buffer the view, these would be evergreens presumably, that would be, you know, year-round screening.
How much distance are we talking about, like for a buffering, like on average, not specific obviously, but just something? What do you?
Roughly, we have roughly there about 35 to 40 feet, it looks like, between the property line and the retaining wall.
Okay, okay, and then on the other side of where the warehouse is, there's also going to be employee parking?
Yes.
That would be next to where, or across from where residents will be living, right?
Well, on the other side, this side here, this is the area?
Nope, on the left.
Down here?
Yep.
Okay.
But you do have trees.
Yes, yeah, yes.
I'm just asking, just for.
What the, what the width is? No, it's a 40-scale map, it looks like, I mean, it varies, but in one place, it's probably about 50 feet, and it goes down to maybe 20 feet at the entrance, so it varies along here.
My next question is, you had mentioned Midland was going to have upgrades. Will there be streetlights put also on Midland where the sidewalks are? Or is it just going to be the lighting around where the warehouse area is, or?
We have lighting in the parking areas, and we would coordinate with the city with the sidewalk program going in there to make sure that there is adequate lighting, yes.
Just, just asking.
Mr. Madden?
Apologies if I ask questions that have already been answered. But I know you don't have a tenant lined up, but what are we looking at, maximum number of truck trips coming down Wisner Avenue?
Okay, on a, on a peak hour basis, we had analyzed up to five trucks per hour. That would be the peak generation.
And we're talking tractor-trailer?
Some of them would be tractor-trailers, usually, we figured two-thirds tractor-trailers, a third single-unit trucks.
Are these trucks idling while they're at the warehouses?
Well, they, they have to conform with the state requirements regarding any idling, yes.
Building number one has 12 loading docks, and the second building has seven?
Correct.
If those loading docks are all occupied, and additional trucks are coming up, where are those trucks waiting?
So they would, we would bring them in off of Midland. In some of the areas where we show parking, they could be there. Depending on the tenant, we may have to make some adjustments to the parking area. If there's less employees, we could use that area for staging. But the plan is to get them in off of Midland, so we don't have any trucks out on Wisner or Midland blocking anything else. But there is width there to accommodate that.
How tall are these warehouses?
16 feet.
We have listed on the map less than 35 feet, which is the maximum allowed by code. I believe it's, in some places, it may be close to 35 feet, but I'd have to check.
Mr. Martinez, do you know what the maximum height is allowed in that zone there?
That would be 35.
Okay.
And so you just stated that the residents along Cottage Street are going to be higher, up to as much as 36 feet higher than the warehouses, or above the floor of the warehouses. So essentially, they will be above the rooftop of these warehouses? That's a question, not a statement. It's hard for me to see that schematic, because the podium is blocking my view.
So we show on the plan, on the cross-section, approximately 30 feet for the height of the proposed building, for building number two. And as I mentioned, the grade at Cottage Street's about 650. So the top of the building is 635, Cottage Street's about 15 feet higher than that.
You had mentioned a fence by the retaining wall, how high is your fence?
We haven't designed that yet, but I'm envisioning probably something in the order of about six feet.
You're allowed up to eight feet there, might be beneficial, because it's a 36-foot-high retaining wall. And you ought to adjust your chain-link fence so that, the typical spacing would be a two-inch, you know, opening. Maybe you ought to decrease that also, you don't want anybody even attempting to climb over that mess.
Definitely have to keep that protected.
Yep.
I have a question.
One last one, please. The signal you're proposing at Midland is, that intersection's very close to North Street, which is already signaled.
Correct.
And we have a firehouse in the middle of those two central signals. I just throwing that out there, I think that that's a cause for a little bit of a concern.
Yeah, so the signals would be coordinated, so that you would have communication between the two signals? And any fire preemption that would be necessary would be worked into that, so.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Martinez, in the city of Middletown, tractor-trailers are not supposed to go down many residential streets. Is that correct, according to our code?
Off the top of my head, I can't.
Because I live in the residential area, well, actually, a couple of us do, near the Delford plant, which is way smaller, it's a small factory in our neighborhood. And when the tractor-trailers have gone off route accidentally, they, from what I understand from our neighbors and what I recall, but I could need my memory refreshed, or maybe the code has changed, that the weight of those trucks can impact the city pipes that are beneath the streets and cause a lot of mayhem. I am concerned about the weight, since we don't really know what's going to be on these trucks and what route they're taking. If they go off track, if we're having at least five trucks an hour for that many trucks, that could be a lot of wear and tear if you. that could be a lot of wear and tear, if you will, on the roads and the piping, both sewer and water underneath those roads.
Yeah, we'd have to comply with any weight restrictions. And we can coordinate with the city if there's additional signing that needs to go in on any of the other residential streets close by to avoid that. And any truck restrictions, except for local deliveries, you know, I think we can work with the city to make sure that those get put in place if they aren't already in place.
Mr. Chairman, I think on the RDM project, we impose some restrictions and also truck routes.
Right. They take the typical truck routes, Dulson Avenue, 17, Route 17. This is Wisner Avenue, Wisner Avenue, right, which is part of the truck route because it heads to 211, which is North Street.
Does any of this property fall in the town of Walk Hill?
No.
Because, okay, all right. So when you're looking at the, if you flip over your map and you're looking at the right side of the, I didn't realize that there's so much wooded area and so much. I thought you were kind of rebuilding what had burned and then stating in that area. I didn't realize that we were, you were going to go into the next area that's basically wooded behind all of those houses on Cottage Street Extension and then where the new, that new cul-de-sac development is. I too am a little, you know, a bit concerned with the grading. Obviously, you can't help the grade. But as Dave Madden pointed out, I mean, I think these people are going to be looking at a, you know, quite a high structure.
No, they're going to be above the structure.
They're going to be above the structure.
I didn't even see it.
Yeah.
But the sound will carry. The sound will carry.
As with the sound of the increased train traffic.
Well, the train traffic is all the way on the, that's nowhere near residential.
It cuts through the city. My house is right next to the train track. Yeah, it's right next to the pedestrian heritage trail as well.
So did I answer your question, Mr. Higby? In other words, the houses are higher.
Okay, the height, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and then with the screening of the trees, they're going to see even less.
As we advance the plans, we can also, you know, we'll look at positioning of HVAC equipment. And if there's any areas that, instead of like a chain-link type fence, if there's other fencing that needs to be done, that would be kind of the next.
Can you just show me on the map how you, the traffic flow would go with a tractor-trailer that's trying to get to your warehouse on the right-hand side?
You mean internally?
Yeah.
Oh.
And just, you know, it's going to be coming off of Wisner onto Midland, right?
Right, so coming off of Wisner onto Midland, the tractor-trailers could be coming this way.
Yeah.
They could turn down into here and then back up into these spaces here.
Okay.
Okay, and then to leave, they could back out, go through, out and down.
Okay.
And then up on this one, I believe we had this one coming down this way, coming up through here, backing into the docks here, and then pulling out this way, back down Midland.
I'm mostly asking that question because of the large number of housing we have on the right-hand side. And then, you know, and then down below on Cottage Street, just wondering how, you know, because obviously, you know, the trucks are the more concern, I think, than the, you know, the employee.
My concern is always, like, when I drive down Ballard Road and I see all those trucks just sitting on the side of the road and they often are blocking the side roads. And I don't want to create a situation like that in our city of Middletown if we can prevent it. Just make sure that there is a place for trucks to stage and wait inside the corridor and make sure that they're definitely not on Wisner.
And the other thing I'd mention also is, Phil had mentioned previously that, you know, again, they'd be monitoring the site for traffic impacts. And again, we could also be monitoring that for parking. And one of the things maybe we would look to do is to bank some of the parking and then leave certain areas, you know, for instance, maybe along Cottage Street. If it's determined that you don't need all the parking to start with, then maybe those are the areas that we would leave landscaped, you know, potentially permanently. Maybe we don't need as much parking as the studies are showing. But again, we're showing it on the plan because we need to account for it in case it is needed.
What's in the middle green space between the two warehouses?
In here?
Yeah.
So this, we have stormwater management areas. Again, as you probably know, New York State DEC requires that we, you know, collect stormwater, we treat it, and then we discharge it. So there's two areas that we have shown here. This is a stormwater treatment area here and one here. Again, that's generally expected to be a landscaped area. But again, that would have some, you know, ponding of water, nothing, usually that would be less than 18 inches of water.
I only ask because if you're going to have the parking space on the bottom that you said to be repurposed for maybe idling trucks that's really close to residents, so just thinking of a different place to do it. I mean, you have a lot of room around it. No, no, no. I just meant for idling trucks, like if that's really a concern that the traffic is going to be so much farther away from the, what seems like the south end or the bottom end of this rendering. Just something to think of. That's where your, that's where our concern is mostly, is down there on Cottage.
Okay.
That's where the most residents are and that's, you know, that and to Dave's.
Right.
Right, and to Dave's point, to clear Wisner and keep Wisner clear. Like, I think those are two, if you could keep those at the front of your mind when you're designing and problem-solving.
Yes.
I have two questions unrelated, but how many train car loads are you anticipating per day? I mean, that must be hard to calculate since you don't know who's coming or going. But I mean, would we be allowed to put a maximum on that as the city's, as, you know, a stipulation in the?
I'm not sure.
I mean, there's limited space that we have available there. I mean, basically, once you come off of Midland, you know, basically, the stub ends here. And I know that what we were talking about was having, you know, basically, room for for forklifts to basically pull materials off. But, I mean, we can figure it out, but I'm guessing there's probably only room for two or three cars there, I would imagine, just looking at that distance.
So you would only have two or three train cars coming through a day, or, I don't mean to?
We can get more information. Again, we don't have tenants lined up.
I understand, I understand.
But I would say that it looks like there's only room for probably two or three cars there, I would think. And their delivery schedule would be up to the tenant. And again, we would have to come in with, to the board with that information at a later date.
And then my other question for you is, have you applied for this anywhere else? And were you told no by any other municipality?
No, not, there's been no applications by the owner that I'm aware of. My understanding is they owned the building at the time that it burned and they're looking to, you know, reconfigure that and repurpose the property.
So we weren't your second or third choice, Middletown?
Not as far as I know, no.
Okay.
This is still the original owner of 13, or Midland Avenue, where the movie studio was and all the other facilities. It's the same person, he just decided to do this instead.
And do a big expansion into the next part, too.
Yeah.
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 Dave, just before you said that, you know, you're not sure what the applicant or whoever the potential tenant would be as far as train cars, but you'd also have to comply with whatever conditions the city set?
Certainly, yes, yes.
Okay. Any more questions at the moment, or? And I think, you know, we're worried about trucks idling and everything else. Don't forget, if they leave spaces for trucks to park and idle, that takes away from their parking also for employees. So it's going to be a fine line, but we'll have to adjust it as we go. Because if they don't meet parking, can't approve it.
Could a solution be to reduce the size of the warehouse? I know no one wants to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, if they needed a space, if they calculate that they need certain spaces for, you know, trucks to park, the building gets smaller.
Or as a condition, you know, we can limit the amount of trucks?
I just have a question. So what is, is it just that, just the size of what kind of warehouse you're planning on it for the space, the right-side warehouse compared to the left-side warehouse? Is it just the configuration of what you foresee as being there? I mean, there's no other, like, what I'm asking is, the right warehouse is not being sought after as like a light industrial, you know, company versus heavy industry, okay?
No, they're both, you know, planned as warehouse space. And I think the light industry, as Phil explained before, is related to traffic generation and essentially being conservative in terms of, you know, estimating the number of vehicles and trucks.
Okay. Anything else, guys? So the question. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One of the renderings said "commercial residential" on it.
I'd have to see that one. I don't remember that being on there, but. Is it "commercial residential"?
It's probably the architect.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
I hadn't heard of apartments on the second floor of a warehouse, but.
I think this is the architect saying that they provide commercial and residential services.
Gotcha.
Because that would be a no.
Just making sure. It'd be an interesting use for a housing-positive community.
Yeah, yeah. No, they wouldn't have got this far. So I think, now, the question is, does the board, in general, have a feeling that this conceptual plan is worthy to move forward before these gentlemen spend hundreds of thousands of dollars? That's why they're here tonight.
I think the section on the left is wonderful. I'm not sure how I feel about the people's backyards and the, you know, and I'm not sure. I think we would have, definitely have some challenges with public hearing when it gets to that. But the left side is clearly industrial now and clearly like a use that was currently and that's always been there. I have no problem with the train track. I mean, the train track is there. But I'm not sure everybody else feels, but the other part is definitely you're getting into residential neighborhoods.
Just address that comment. Can you tell us on your plan where the existing structures were?
Yeah, if you look close up, you can.
I can't see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why I stood up there and went to it. I was amazed about how much of it is not.
It is a little bit hard to see, but I believe that the old foundation is visible here.
Okay.
That part, no.
There's also buildings, so this is showing here, existing buildings to be removed, so these are showing in red here.
Mm-hmm.
So they're being taken out to accommodate the building. And then just, I noticed some concrete laying around there, too. Need more clarification on that? I certainly can give you.
No, I just, just a generalization. I just wanted to have an idea.
But Dan, it is a permitted use in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole area is, I'm not sure if it's I-2 or I-1, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's an industrial zone.
And the town line must be very close, right? I mean, because I, isn't that Winding Ridge Lane, like, those housing developed behind it, isn't that the town of Walk Hill?
Yeah, it's not Middletown, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, they would be noticed.
Where is the line? Is, none of this property is in the?
No.
No, it's all Middletown.
So is that the line, the property line, the line?
I do not know.
Okay.
How close is it to the town of Walk Hill?
So is it city water and sewage, then?
Yeah, so I think, so this map, I know it was, it's been sort of massaged over time to show various things, but I know we had one of the previous ones that we had reviewed. But the property line, I'm pretty sure does back up to the property line, the municipal boundary of the town of Walk Hill. So I believe it's just north of, you know, the right side of the map as you're looking at it. Just to the north of that is the property boundary and the town of Walk Hill.
Gotcha. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Yes, Nicole.
You were doing like a round table.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Okay, I think you guys have put a lot of thought into this. I like a lot of what I see, but I have some very serious concerns about the impact on the quality of life of our residents with this project. I think it's very big. I really feel like it's such a large-scale. Thoughts that come to my mind right off the top of my head are if they're going to be flammable, stored or transported, chemical spills come to mind if there are certain chemicals being brought in and out, construction debris, as I said before. We had a, when Chartwell, this is my first year on the planning board, way back in 2006, Chartwell wanted to put in a trash train, we had a full house. I know that when Otisville recently, and Mount Hope recently, had a similar application, they had a full house. I am thinking that the residents are going to not respond positively based on the evidence of past issues. The increased train traffic, I have a concern about. How many whistles are we going to hear? How much noise are we going to hear? And the weight restrictions and the wear and tear on our asphalt, on our pipes, on our sewer. But again, I would love to see it be positive and go through, but I'm really, with all those unknowns, I don't know how I could vote on it when the time comes. Maybe you'll have more information as we progress. I certainly wouldn't want to just say no, you know. But, thank you.
Ms. Witt?
I have concerns about the traffic on Wisner with the weight constructions because every spring and fall, it floods in that area, right near there. So, and I know that's not a you problem, that's a city of Middletown problem, but if there's more weight that's being in traffic going on that area, I do also have concerns about the residents. I don't live far from this area. So, no, I'm not talking about me, I'm just, the residents on Cottage, I just, I have concerns about that. Does there need to be a seeker form? Because if there wasn't any existing building on the right, do you have to apply for seeker or not?
So certainly, yes. We would need to provide secret documentation for the planning board's review. Again, this is, I think, a first presentation to the board. You know, as we proceed, we certainly would provide the secret documentation to the board, assuming, I guess it would probably take lead agency on the project, but that would be up to the board.
And just like my colleague, Ms. Houston, I'm not just saying no, but I think I just have some reservations, concerns. Thank you.
It does seem like an exponentially large increase from the previous use. And I realize that what you said, that that's what it's zoned for. And if it was 10, you know, 10,000 square-foot warehouses, one at a time, over a course of time, we probably wouldn't be freaking out as much. But it's a two-lane road, most of the way coming down Wisner, two-lane road on North Street. It's a lot, if we're increasing the amount of space that's available by that much, it seems like we're opening ourselves up to a larger increase. I know town of Walk Hill down by Mud Mills is worried about the same thing, that the warehouse space there is increasing so much without the, you know, the infrastructure being able to handle it. And I think that is a real concern that, I don't know how we can address because of your point that it is all legal and coded, but this is why they're here, right?
That's right. I'm going to try to answer all your questions. Mr. Madden?
No, you go first.
I think I voiced all my major concerns. I like the idea of the project. The concept is good for that area, but I do concern myself over trucks taking up space on Wisner Avenue, making their way through that little tiny two-lane section of Wisner Avenue and idling on Midland and Wisner. That's my gravest concern. But I do think the concept is a great concept for that property.
Mr. McCormick?
I think it's, the concept is great. I just took a quick look at city code. There does not appear to be any weight restrictions on any of the roads entering in or exiting from that part of town. You could check, Nicole, too, just so you know, it's Section 460-34, Limitation of Heavy Traffic on City Streets. Just hearing my colleagues' concerns, is this a project that we could phase in and perhaps start with the left-hand side of it and see how it goes? And then, over time, if the need is there, go to the second one? If that would help the planning board come to a resolution and agreement on the project. But, you know, in terms of what's going to go there, this is what it's zoned for. I don't feel that we really, it's not really in our purview to say no to that type of development since that's what it's zoned for. And I think that we can exercise greater control over the use of it when a tenant is proposed and a tenant wants to go in there. And that's when we can start talking about limiting of the train traffic and trucks and idling time and parking and that type of stuff. But conceptually, as a project, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't want to move forward with it. wouldn't see why we wouldn't want to move forward with it.
And obviously, it's still all subject to our consultants' review and limitations, checking to see if the infrastructure supports the project, that's what CPL would do for us, and they'll also review the secret process.
Is there any way that you could make a holding pattern for the trucks, or is that something, because I know exactly what, you know, Dave was saying about how, you know, there's lots of warehouse things where people are sitting on sides of roads, you know, trying to get in to, to be there, you know, waiting for their allotted time, or they get there early for their pickups, or, you know, I'm not sure if you can make that road into it a bit wider.
Yeah, we could look at increasing that to have a staging area.
Off the road, yeah.
There's room to work with to accommodate that.
Yeah, that might be a good thing, yeah. And I love Rich's idea about, you know, maybe phasing in and see if the need is, I mean, let's face it, almost anything's going to be an improvement to what we had in that property, I mean, it was a lot of older buildings with lots of different tenants and lots of different uses and lots of different, you know...
Violations.
Violations and challenges and whatever, so I think it's all going to be a great improvement, I, personally, I'm not sure how the public will feel about, you know, a warehouse in their backyard when it's a wooded area, but if the need is there and it's zoned for it, you know, that's...
I'd like another sketch or plan, kind of depicting what's to the right of this, where the other residential areas, even though it's town of Walk Hill, just to see some relationship to where it's going.
And maybe if it's possible to scale back the project on the left, the warehouse, so that you can accommodate a little wider lane to allow the staging there.
For the record, the zone, because I didn't have the paper on it, the zoning for this is commercial residential, but also light industrial, what is the actual zoning for this entire property, or is it broken up based on?
It's I-2, is it?
It's all I-2, okay, thank you.
Is this one lot or two lots?
I believe it's two lots, if I remember correctly, that's what I have in my notes.
Is he going to need to join them?
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, that would be part of the project, it's lots, sorry, it's lots 9-1-3.1 and 9-1-3.2, total area 17 acres.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, thank you very much.
I think you have some marching orders.
Yeah.
Just thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yep. We're not allowed discussion, are we? So we have to call for adjournment. All right, since we've all had our say and view, I need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Madden, second Mr. McCormick, all in favor?
Aye.